Good afternoon, everyone. We're in the committee of the whole meeting for September 25th. Halatan Squalom, Kweestulakmet, Klasphohomish, Awamua. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. There is an agenda in front of the committee. I'm looking for a motion to adopt it. That moved by Ted, seconded by Doug. All those in favor? Hope to any motion carries. First up, we have our annual report from our beloved library. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Hillary Bloom, Director of Library Services. And to my right is David Gaten, Chair of the Squamish Public Library Board. We are delighted to be able to share with you our library's 2017 annual report, as well as an update on 2018 activity and accomplishments to date. You will have seen the full report, the full annual report in your agenda package. And I have provided print copies here today as well. The annual report was first presented to the library board in June for their approval and includes highlights of 2017 accomplishments, statistics, financial information, and acknowledgement of our many supporters. Much of this information also appears in the district's annual report. And we submit an exhaustive annual statistics report and grant report to the province each spring, as well as our statement of financial information or SOFI for the library each spring as well. So I'm just drawing your attention to one piece of it up there on the screen, just to point out that this section of the report is broken into the four priorities of our current strategic plan. Inspiring new and current patrons, reaching everyone, creating a culture of assessment, and providing access to reliable information in a neutral and confidential setting. So you can certainly read through the highlights that are listed there, and there are many. But I wanted to just draw out a couple today. Things that happened in 2017 that we're especially proud of are our after-school programs that we ran. We started a new STEED library in conjunction with Squamish Can. We had various pop-up library events at locations around town. And we launched our e-newsletter, and we actually used the opportunity with the CLIME project that's happening district-wide. That's what we chose as our project for CLIME. So in less than nine months, we now have nearly 1,000 subscribers to our e-newsletter. Having that focus with CLIME was great because it made us really promote and encourage subscription. We had a lot of community engagement undertaken in 2017 through our community input survey and our annual open house. We added Lynda.com to our array of databases, and we put the final touches on our children's area renovation with our beautiful new mural in 2017 as well. The next shot includes some statistics, and this is really just a brief snapshot of some of the many things we measure. The annual survey that we send to the province has literally hundreds and hundreds of data points of information we collect each year. These statistics that you see are also reported in the district's annual report. And I also just wanted to draw your attention to the photo there because we have a board game club now that runs in the library. It took a break over the summer, but it's been a really popular thing on Sunday afternoons. And little-known and new fact, we now lend out board games to the community as part of our lending, so you can actually take out these really great board games. And please bring them back after three weeks. So in terms of the statistics, like I said, this is just a very select few trends. You'll notice a couple of things. A slight decrease in program attendance over 2016, so this is all comparisons to 2016. We did offer a few less programs in 2017 due to some staff absences and shuffling around of positions. Also, interestingly, a slight decrease in the number of new memberships. So our memberships overall have increased, but in terms of measuring new. So I wonder if that's an indication of a slight saturation of the market, because in recent years, we've been really pushing that and seeing that new membership amount So otherwise, total circulation continues to increase, but we are noticing that digital, circulation of digital materials like ebooks are starting to offset some of the circulation of print materials. So overall, circulation is still going up, but a little bit of a shift in terms of borrowing. And I also just wanted to say that, I'll speak a little bit more later about our upcoming new strategic plan, but we are developing right now new key performance indicators based on new goals that we're developing. So this type of snapshot may look a little different in the future as we start to restructure what we're looking at measuring year over year. And then the very bottom part of that just was a little bit of an idea of the sheer amount that goes on in our library on a typical day. So you can see that about 430 people visiting every day, 107 Wi-Fi sessions. You can read it yourself as well, but that's really just our annual amounts divided by the total number of days that we were open in the year, just to give a little bit of an idea of all that's going on next door all the time. These are just a couple of five-year trends to show you. So like I said, total active cardholders from 2013 to 2017 has certainly increased. Active cardholders is defined as anybody who's been using their card within the last three years. So we're showing that we certainly are, you know, seeing more and more people using or getting cards and using them. And then similarly, in-person visits are going up and up. One thing that I've thought about recently is how our foot counter, that's how we know our number of visitors, it's at the gates that are right at the entrance to the circulation desk area. So those people that come to programs that don't necessarily ever come into the library, we don't actually get a count on those. But anyway, it gives us an idea of generally how much traffic is coming through. And then one more graph. So this is showing public computer sessions. So our public internet machines, the blue, shows the number of sessions from 2013 to 2017. And then the green is the number of Wi-Fi sessions. So we had Wi-Fi earlier than 2015, but we did not have a way to count it until 2015. So again, just ever-increasing usage, but especially in the Wi-Fi realm that we see there's still demand for public internet computers, but more and more people have their own devices. So they're coming in to use their own machines and use space to use the free Wi-Fi. And it does just, again, emphasize that the IT infrastructure and access is absolutely important in terms of what people need and want from their library. Okay, so moving from there, that was all to do with the 2017 report. I just wanted to now give you an update on some of the 2018 accomplishments to date, thanks to the funding and support by the municipality. One of the main exciting recent things is extending our open hours. At the beginning of July, we did that, and now we're open a total of 60 hours a week, up from 55 before, and up from 50 back in 2014. So we've actually increased it by 10 hours in very recent years. So we're now open 10:00 a.m. seven days a week across the board. And we're open till 8:00 p.m. Monday to Thursday, and we stay open later till 5:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday. And Sundays are still 10 to 4:00. And patrons love the earlier opening time, the 10:00 a.m. time just really makes sense. It corresponds well with transit schedules and people's morning activity in the downtown core. So all those people that used to be frustrated when they rattled that locked door, they just get to open it now and come in, so it's great. And we've heard lots of really great comments about that. The other thing is the addition of new work-study space and table, through the addition of tables and stools. So those furnishings are arriving later this fall, hopefully October. And so that will be adding some additional workspace at the front of the library. And as an added unexpected bonus, we are actually now also going to be replacing the fireplace seating, thanks to support from the SLRD and the Friends of the Library. So we're going to be adding new seating around the fireplace section this year as well. We added a new inclusive welcome sign at the library entrance. We all looked very chilly in that picture. It must have been a windy, spring day. I remember, it was very cold, but we were smiling. And it's a great sign. It's material that from the inside of the library, you can see right through it, but from the outside, it looks solid. It's kind of like an optical illusion.
It's magic.
It's magic. And it ties into the children's mural with the same design and patterns. And that was a collaborative effort. We, staff worked together on writing it, and we consulted with Safe and Sound Squamish to ensure that we were being inclusive and decided to make it a long list to make sure that nobody felt excluded by, just trying to make sure we listed anyone and everyone.
Of course, somebody saw it, I hope. Fantastic libraries leading again. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you, yeah. And we hear from so many people that they love it and lots of Instagram tags by people from visiting, visiting from other places tagging the library, so. We love it. Finally, the big work that's been going on this year is we completed our community input survey report at the beginning of the year, and I'm very proud of all the work that we've been doing. I just wanted to pause for a moment and share with you, that quote up there is a response from our survey, which I feel is a testament to the welcoming environment we've worked really hard to establish and foster. So this is from the survey. "The library is, as it should ideally be, a place where everyone is welcome and able to participate. The library is a cornerstone of the community, a hub of connection and information. I feel a sense of ownership and belonging, comfort and opportunity at the library. The staff are tremendously kind, caring, approachable, and helpful." So that makes me feel very proud of what's going on and all the staff and their thought and kindness in the way that they welcome everybody through our doors. So from these community results, we propelled ourselves into strategic planning. We just held our final board and staff workshop last week and are now putting our noses to the grindstone, right, David? To complete our 2019 to 2023 plan and unveil it very shortly. And I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous support and hard work of our library board in this process, as it's been a true group effort. And now, in that vein of gratitude and appreciation, I'm going to turn it over to David Gaten to speak about the library's future steps.
First off, let me thank the council and the mayor. We feel that we have been well-supported. When we needed funds for security, you didn't hesitate. We have had strong representation from the council on the board. They have been very helpful. It's been very useful to have Karen for two years rather than just one year, and I would hope in the future that you keep this option open. I think it takes a year to figure out what we're doing, and in the second year, you can be helpful. Mayor Heisman, we thank you in particular. You show up at all sorts of functions. We hope you will continue to do so, and we wish you well. As Hillary said, I will talk a little bit about the future. About 25 years ago, a group of smart people got together and planned the present library. And they did a good job. The library has been there for 21 years. It has been a very good library, and it continues to be a very good library. However, if you can move the... The general feeling is that libraries need to rethink every 20 to 25 years, and I suspect that this is too long. Libraries are changing very quickly these days. The programming has to be rethought virtually every year. Programs have to be rethought with the revolution in digital information. However, when it comes to bricks and mortar, you do have to be a little bit more long-term. And maybe that's the 20, the 25 years we're thinking about, and we've come to the end of 20 years. Can you move on to the next one? Looking down at the future, we thought, okay, well, how are we doing now compared to libraries in similar communities? And this is all taken from the EC government data. For example, we have about 10% less space per capita than other communities. We have 30% more circulation per capita. We have 25% more circulation per hours open, and we're considerably weak on the computer access side of things. If you look at our population projections, you can figure it out for yourself, in maybe only 10 or 15 years, we're going to have to at least double our capacity. We are running at capacity now. If you can move on to the next slide. Hillary's always already mentioned the public survey, which we thought was a useful thing to have since we are going into strategic planning. And not surprisingly, given the quality of Hillary and her staff, it was overwhelming support for the library. And as mentioned in that quote, the library is a community hub. Again, not surprisingly, they thought the staff was absolutely fabulous. However, they would like more and varied space, and I think when we're looking at the future, we have to have flexible space. It's hard for us to predict exactly what sort of space programs will need. They certainly wanted more hours, and Hillary's already given them more hours. They want more programs. There's all sorts of stuff out there that they would like to see us doing. We're doing a lot of stuff already, but they want us to do more. And everybody said more technology. Everybody wants technology. Every kid in the world wants 3D printers. And most libraries these days have 3D printers. People clearly see the library as a place where they want, they want easy access to electronic stuff, they want education in electronic stuff, they look to the library to supply this. They're not looking elsewhere, they're looking to the library. So looking ahead, as Hillary mentioned, we are, we have over the summer been working on strategic planning. We have a document which is almost ready, and we're quite pleased with it. Of immediate importance, we need the technology. We are in danger of falling behind. So what we are going to propose, and Hillary will go into the dollar details in her budget later in the year, but we need, we need a librarian whose skills and background are in digital technology. We need that to make sure that our interaction with the public is up to date, that our websites are up to date, that the staff is up to date on these issues, and that we are in a position to educate the public. We need this position badly. And along with that, we'll need a budget to go along for the... Our hardware is pretty adequate. They're having a hard time keeping up to date. So yeah, there's dollars involved, but in these, in terms of these positions and stuff, not big dollars. Where big dollars are going to come, of course, will be in the future. What the board is wanting to do with this strategic plan is to next year get down to a real thorough needs assessment. There's a lot of fascinating stuff out there, a lot of fascinating programs, there's a lot of literature to get into, and I think that the board is prepared to do the heavy lifting here. It's a very energetic board, there's a lot of skills on the board. We're hoping to get two new people on board this year with skills that we don't already have. But that will be our task for the coming year. It's hard to know exactly what we're going to need, and if you look at the literature, everybody else is in the same, in the same boat. I mean, do we need a new building, or do we expand our present building? Do we have satellites? Do we have mobile libraries? We don't know. And we don't know where technology is going to lead us in terms of the programs we need. So the board is going to get down to work this coming year. We'll need a budget to get a few experts to help us, but basically, as I say, we will do most of the heavy lifting. I think it's going to be fun. It's an exciting time to be on the board because it is a transition period. We've got to look at 20 years down the line. So we're going to have lots of fun, and we thank you for your support, and we hope the new council will be equally supportive. Thank you. Hillary, you have a little more?
Couple, couple more quick little things. You will see that you have an invitation to our upcoming open house, Thursday, October the 4th, 6:30 p.m. It's a, it's a night to celebrate the library and come and engage with the staff and board and the community to learn more. But it's also going to be when we unveil the strategic plan framework and have some fun activities. Mini golf, cake, lots of good stuff. And I urge anyone else, both here and anyone listening or tuning in, to please join us as well. It's an event for current fans and future fans and maybe even reluctant fans who haven't stepped into a library in years, because that's the thing, there's really something for everyone in what we offer, and we're proud to welcome and show off what we've got. And it's never too late to begin using the library, so don't ever be shy about coming in and getting set up. It will improve your quality of life and your feeling of connection to your amazing community. Finally, kind of embarrassed to say that the snowflakes in the back of this picture are an indication of how long it's been since we've taken an updated staff photo. That was from last winter. I think we're too busy helping everyone to pose very often, so... But there, there is a lot of our staff in that picture. And again, just wanted to thank current mayor and council for your support and appreciation of the library. And we've really achieved a great many things for our community, thanks to you in recent years. I'll leave it at that and open it up to questions at this point.
Thanks. I've got Councilor Chappell and then Councilor Lewis.
Thanks. Always appreciate the immense amount of work that the board of directors did when I settled a board of directors for the library, and the new board seems really passionate about technology, which I'm really excited about. I think having a strategic plan over the next few years would be an amazing resource for the library. I also wonder about 20 years out planning when things so rapidly change with... You mentioned 3D printing and technology. Having a makerspace in a lot of the library spaces, they are our entry-level education and introduction to so many new technologies and so many facets of education for our community. And being able to resource that adequately is an essential thing for any council for, for the library space. I wonder about the exploration of having the library be a bit of a makerspace with 3D printing, because that is completely different technology, but looking to space use and cordoning off some space that could be a place where it's hands-on education for new technologies such as 3D printing. I'm wondering what your thoughts about space.
Yeah, we discuss that often in terms of, as it stands, we feel limited in kind of how we could make that space available in the current space. Even just the open floor plan of our library makes it difficult to cordon off space when every spare chair is being occupied by people using Wi-Fi and whatnot. So it's more about, you know, ideally space expansion or additional space. And in doing that, it would certainly involve that creation lab idea. So whether it be 3D printing, whether it be people being able to come and digitize and preserve their own family history, converting VHS to digital for old films, you name it, it can be so many different things. VR-related things, green screen, learning to film and do podcasts. I mean, there's like a million things that can happen, and lots of libraries around Lower Mainland are, are leading the charge in that. But it is about having dedicated space to do that, and what we hear from the community is that that's certainly an aspect that they would like to see happen.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think your timing is actually, I need to say, quite timely with other things that are happening in the district to, to kind of look at, kind of going through your structure and so forth, because it is quite timely. I can only urge you, speaking for myself, to do that soon rather than later. I think that will be helpful for, for our planning in the next term if any of us are here. So, but I'm wondering, when you say over the next 20 years, your needs might, your capacity will have to double, does that translate into square footage necessarily? I appreciate you haven't done a needs assessment yet, but does that mean you need to be twice as big? Or does that just mean you need to get twice as many people through, say, a space that's 50% as big? I mean, are there any general comments you can make about that?
You know, there's, there's a number of different standards out there. I don't think anything's etched in stone, but generally, they feel that for, you know, per capita, you need .5 to 1 square foot per person. Now, we're hanging in there at about .55. But if you look at the population down the road, if we want to be in that ballpark in terms of square footage, yes, we need a bigger space.
That's the total.
I think there's lots of potential for us to be incorporated into space with other, with other functions. For example, the arts. For example, heritage and archival functions. I think those are, would be natural place, you know, if you're going to build a city hall one day. I think it all has to go together, and I think there are lots of economies to be had. But I think what we want to do in the next year is to say, well, are those standards relevant to us, or do we want to go some other, in some other direction? Do we want to be more mobile? Is it going to be all in the ethers in terms of, you know, the digital world? We're not quite sure, but this is what I think we have to, I'm thinking about. But I would be very surprised if we don't come up with the need for more square foot.
And certainly, we've had those conversations with the library already about a municipal hall and what to incorporate into that facility, and how we make sure we're allowing for the growth and expansion of library programming. I suspect that a nonprofit or a not-for-profit makerspace will come into town in the near future. Like it's, it's an opportunity sprouting up everywhere, and so cultivating those partnerships with either, even if it's a corporately sort of structured place, makerspace, or a nonprofit makerspace, cultivating those collaborations and partnerships with those entities. Because I suspect they're going to get there before you're going to have the space to grow into it, just because the space takes that long to build. But you know, that's the way to think about it. The other thing to think about, just as you, as you contemplate your strategic vision, and even as you contemplate how to get more computers in there and more technology in there, just always be cognizant that in a municipal budget cycle, you know, we like to create some certainty and some predictability in terms of tax rates and that type of thing. So if all of a sudden you replace every computer a year, it spikes up the budget in that year. So as you think about replacement and growing, just try to keep in mind our budget cycles and how we can make sure we're dovetailing with a graduated strategic plan as opposed to sort of spikes in budgets in every year. Sometimes you can avoid it, but to just keep that in mind in terms of how, how you start to present programming to the council of the day.
We, we have thought about that, and I, we realize that, you know, our budgets are presented yearly, and we were thinking that we need to go to a three-yearly budget cycle. So you have an idea a few years out.
Yeah, we do, we have to, we're mandated legislatively to do a five-year financial plan.
And maybe we should be...
We tend to, we have a lot of capital projects projected out 10, 15 years too. So, but if you started to strategically put out a five-year plan or even a three-year to start, I think that would be really helpful.
We are actually, even for this coming budget cycle, you'll see that we're starting to build that in beyond the year to come into at least the three-year span ahead. So hopefully that helps for map, future mapping a bit more.
Yeah. Well, and just to say, like, I think we have one of the best libraries around. I think you guys have done an amazing job and really a forward-thinking job to trying to keep up ahead of the trends and lead. You led on reconciliation, you're leading on equality issues. Keep up that work because really, you're such an important part of that interface with the community. And, and I think you've done a fantastic job. I think your whole team, the board, the staff, Hillary, everyone's done a fantastic job. Thank Karen for sitting on the board for the last two years. I know she's been of great value to your board. So any, just final questions from the council at this point? Unfortunately, I can't make up to the fourth, I'm sorry, I'll be able to tell, but I'm sure you'll get all the candidates there.
Yep, hopefully.
We sure hope so. That'll make the crowd themselves.
Yeah. And then you don't need a motion from us, this is, oh, your, your budget will come back to the new council probably in November, December, whenever it comes back. Final question?
Yep. I just wanted to make sure that in the budget, you definitely are forward-thinking and include everything that you need, that it's, that it's a progressive...
Everything.
Yeah. And yeah, looking for the future space needs assessment.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Next kind of agenda, we have the RCP annual report. We pulled that report. We felt that needed a little more substance and some data and some strategic, actual strategic sort of correction in the report, so that will come back to, probably won't make it back to this council, but will be for the new council in November. And I'm not sure, do we have a while here yet?
Yes.
Maybe just two minutes before we go there. Gary, do you have maybe a little update on the Tantos Fire Hall that we could just...
Yes. Just in terms of the recent correspondence that we've had internally, and from external, the building itself is safe. It's structurally safe to allow employees to work in the building. I'll hand something out at the end of the evening. I'll hand something out at the end of email that you... Safer employees, it's safe for the public to be in the building. I mean, we're working on seismic upgrades to a number of our buildings, this is one of them, to meet current seismic standards in the B.C. building code. The fire hall doesn't meet the highest of those standards. The work that we've undertaken has improved it, and the intent was that we improved it to the point we can operate it while we're planning for a new for something. There are a number of structural deficiencies that are identified in that report that council has seen that stretch back over time. So most of those deficiencies have been remedied. Some are intended to be sort of part, short-term remedies. Some are intended to be part of the final seismic upgrade of the facility. They've improved the seismic performance of the structure. It's probably not at post-disaster standard, and my understanding at this point of post-disaster standard, the highest level in the B.C. building code is that the building stays up during the largest earthquake we can sort of reasonably grant for. It allows people to safely get out of the building. The building may be unusable after that point, but it stays up. It may not meet that. It would not have understood even a minor seismic event previously, but it's impossible to know how it's going to operate. There's no way to understand how it's going to operate under a moderate or large earthquake in the future, but we know it'll be better than it was before. So we previously budgeted $2 million for the seismic upgrade. It was when we got into that when we realized that we can upgrade the building, but the rest of the building wasn't going to meet our needs operationally. Building itself and the size of the site probably aren't adequate for our future needs. So at that point, we sort of said, well, perhaps we'd better not continue and spend all of that money, perhaps we'd better take a more strategic look about the replacement of that fire hall, and whether or not it happens there somewhere else. So that's where we're currently at. I say the decision to sort of stop was made because we thought there was a more strategic decision. The building is safe, the building itself now is safe. It's safer staff, it's safer the public, and it's safer than it was before.
And just remind me, did we get some seismic upgrades to the other fire hall, did we not? Is it seismically post-disaster standard?
No, I did print an email. The answer is yes, with the exception, there were roof and one other element was made seismically safer. The hose tower was budgeted for this year but came in over budget, so we're carrying that and looking for more money to finish it next year. So it's part of the way through the seismic upgrade.
And our CMP building, is it, is it post-disaster standard?
The last major upgrade to the B.C. building code for seismic was 2006, so that should be built to the latest and highest level of seismic requirements.
It's pre-2006.
Well, in that case, it may, it's likely fairly robust, but it perhaps, it may not meet the latest standards.
Might be worthwhile to put in the next year's budget, if it hasn't been done, a proper seismic evaluation of particular emergency first response facilities. And that may include Brennan Park, as that's usually our gathering of the public. It might be just something to consider, just to consider it, just so we have a really comprehensive understanding, and that is then integrated into our facilities and real estate master plan in terms of all that financial planning.
Thank you. And I don't want to get into a detailed discussion right now, but I'm just wondering, is there any process or staff working on any plan for relocation or replacement of that building? I mean, is that sort of on a work plan, or is it something we have not yet started?
Build here, too, if you want to just...
Frankly, this has pushed, it's put the issue right back onto the front bench, so there have been a number of discussions, I think, in the last few days about, we need to solve that issue. So yes, it is. Thank you.
Yeah, I think conversations were sort of puddering along.
Now they're not puddering.
Yeah, that particularly as the Chica fan comes to adoption and that whole understanding of the growth in the Bracknell area, and we can actually now start to strategically think where a replacement hall may be and possibly a third hall in the future, and how you want to strategically figure out the timing of all those things, the sequencing of all those things. So that if there's not enough money in the budget already, then obviously you might want to propose that in 2019 budget. Awesome, any questions for staff? Seeing none, welcome. We are here to talk about the community wildfire protection plan, and maybe I'll just pass it over to Chief Stoner, and he can introduce himself, please.
I'm Chief Stoner. I'm here with Megan Latimer. She's our program coordinator. And Bruce Blackwell's from Blackwell Associates to present our community wildfire protection plan 2017 update. We're going to present it. Bruce has a short-ish PowerPoint that'll take us through the high points. And then we have just a recommendation that the committee recommended to council that the District of Squamish adopt a community wildfire protection plan as presented. And then, Bruce, you want to take it away?
Great. Thanks, Chief Stoner. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a local consultant based in North Van. I've been involved in wildfire planning my whole career. I fought fires. I went to UBC, did a master's in fire science, did a lot of forestry work before fire became more topical again, and started doing work in parks and others. And then I ended up in 2003, working for Gary Philman after the 2003 fire. And I think, I think we're on to about 160 of these community wildfire protection plans around B.C. So I've done a lot of these. They're an evolving process. We're learning more and more, and what we're finding is that if you followed this story, it's a changing and evolving one. That has significantly increased in its magnitude, and if I'd probably presented to you here in 2007, the recommendations would have been quite different, because the reality is that the climate is creating situations where things are getting worse and worse. And it's now affecting the whole province, in my opinion. So essentially, we were retained in 2017 to develop this plan. This program was created by the province. It's funded by the province through the UBCM SWIPE program, and it's really here to aid communities. You cost share in it, and it's really focused on mitigating damages from fires, so that limits the impact to both infrastructure and the community. And as I mentioned, you had a previously funded CWPP in 2007. Basically, just to set the table here, since this fire season, the SWIPE program is going to move to a new program called CRI, or CRI, and it's a community resilient investment program. It's going to make available about $50 million, $10 million before December 7th, and then $20 million over the next two years. And communities can apply to this funding without any in-kind. So up to $100,000, if you have areas that are identified as high threat or extreme threat, you're allowed to apply. And you can apply for any level of funding under a bunch of different envelopes, so you can do different things. It's not just fuel treatments, it's not just planning. You can do workshops, you can do a whole range of stuff. I don't have all the details, but I'm working with the government, trying to figure out what they are going to fund and what they aren't going to fund. It was a result of the 2017 review, and I don't know what's going to come out of the 2018 review, but there's a whole pile of things available. I think really, the most important thing is you have been proactive in this. You have got FireSmart training for your staff. There has been public education done by the fire department. You have got good signage, you've got a lot of people passing through this corridor that really don't understand this issue, and they're probably one of the biggest risks. And I think the timing of this plan is excellent in terms of what funding's available and moving forward, given the changing conditions. You've got an updated plan, and now you can take advantage of that as it relates to the funding available. And if anybody has a question as I go along here, please let me know. So this is essentially the study area that you see in front of you. This is what we call the area of interest. And the area of interest is based on setting up a 2-kilometer buffer around the interface density of the community, and trying to understand where the most significant hazards are relative to that 2-kilometer boundary against the municipal boundary. We did a lot of fieldwork as part of this plan, and we go into the forested areas, and we put in what's called threat plots. And those threat plots define where the risk is. This is a provincial layer called the, it's, it looks at fire behavior, it looks at interface density, it looks at spotting risk and the fuel types. And basically, you can see from the schematic here that the northern part of the community is the area that we have to worry about most. You get outflow winds, winds moving up the valley, down the valley, that's a significant forested portion, and this is where we have a high probability of ignition and the most likelihood of potential damage in the community. That's not to say that the winds can't blow what we call embers down further the valley and land in vulnerable parts of the community, that's called spotting. But this is the area where we have quite a bit of forest area that we're worried about it impacting the community. So based on that, we have identified priority treatment areas where we would recommend some form of RECI and potentially prescriptions, and then fuel management to mitigate some of the hazards related to the fuel accumulated there. This is not clear-cutting, this is thinning. I don't know how many of you have been to Whistler and seen some of the work that we've done in Whistler, but we're taking out all the ladder fuels that move fire to the top surface fuels. It's very, it's a light-handed approach, where we're looking at keeping shade and the residual overstory, the largest trees, to provide shade and maintain moisture in the stand. So we have identified quite a large area, and there's, of the 740 hectares we looked at, 195 of those is high priority. And this high priority area would qualify under this new CRI program. So the fuel management would be focused on effectively reducing that fuel loading, both the surface fuel loads and the intermediate ladder fuel. And ultimately, you want to combine this with trying to get people's backyards cleaned up and biomass removal on properties where there's lots of, a lot of people have vegetation right around their homes. We talk about a priority zone one in FireSmart, where we're trying to get people to manage those fuel loads right around their homes, because this is a two-stage approach here. We can deal with the landscape stuff, but if people don't deal with their own homes, and this is why FireSmart's so important, we work on getting the building envelope in a good condition. So in other words, we don't have wood roofing, we don't have wood siding, we don't have hazards around the building, and we look at the vegetation right around the property. And we'll talk about that more as we go through the presentation here. So what, the stages of fuel management is we develop a prescription. So the prescription then goes through a phase of consultation, both with the fire department, emergency management, with the local community, make sure the neighborhood's onside, and then it's implemented, contracts typically will be tendered, and it's usually done during the winter months. So we've got work starting in Powell River, we worked all through in North Van. In a community like Whistler, where we're dealing with snow, we have a much more limited window, but here, you've got a fairly good window in which you can practice fuel management, and it's not done during the fire season, because it is a hazardous activity removing all this material. We've looked at your policy and bylaws, and we've recommended that you establish a development permit area where you've got a lot of development that's going to be close to the forest. And ideally, you're going to engage with the development community, get them onside with this process. And then as development, the beauty of this community is you've got a lot of development moving forward, and you can control that development. Whereas a lot of areas that are built out without the proper standards, and Whistler is a really good example, they've already got too much wood roofing, they've already got too much wood, and they've got trees and vegetation all next to their, their building envelope, and they're having to go backwards. You want to set the table now so that new developments are built out in a way where you've mitigated that risk of fire. And approximately 85% of interface fires are avoided if you can meet FireSmart standards, particularly the roofing standard. It's very important to sort of follow along those standards. Basically, we've recommended reviewing bylaw number 1822 to make sure that combustibles are removed from around the home. A lot of people have propane, they have wood, various things. We also would like to see more than 1 point of access in new subdivisions. These are common problems you see all over the province, where build up builds islands of homes, there's one way in, one way out. That's dangerous for the fire department during a fire event. It's also going to reduce the ability to evacuate that portion of the community. The other thing to consider is amending compliance with the National Fire Protection Association's 1141 standard. That's a common standard that's been adopted across North America. And ideally, new subdivision applications are reviewed by the fire department so that they're comfortable with the amount of water that's available to them through the hydrant system, they can get in and out of the area. I can tell you stories about evacuation, just in my own community in North Van District. When they had the slide, I think in 2007, they had a one-way-in, one-way-out access, where they had to evacuate a bunch of people in the middle of the night in a big rainstorm. One woman was killed. They ended up in that neighborhood and found that 20% of the people couldn't get themselves out of their own homes. So as the communities are aging, there's more elderly people, evacuation is becoming a bigger and bigger issue in many communities.
Just quickly on that, this might go through to Chief Stoner, don't, doesn't the fire department already look at lower subdivision applications and...
Yes.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be insinuated that we're not already...
And I'm not. I just want to make sure it continues.
Absolutely.
But with all of these things in mind.
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
I don't ever remember reading anything on any of our reports about the fire department, though I know that, I absolutely know the fire department does review. We don't really get comments on our development reports.
Absolutely.
Development spring's had, I mean, all of them have.
Yeah, in many development, we are, part of the weekly planning. We do give input, and how much of that meets it through on the presentation to the council, I don't know, but we definitely have input.
Presentation.
And our input is definitely...
Do you want to do some of that on...
Well, on these here, so if we adopt some new regulations, will that change the way the fire department looks at and handle subdivision and things like that?
Sorry, I missed that.
Well, you know, like we've got the ones at the university, there are long roads with just a little turnaround on them. And that's the one that sticks out in my mind, because we kind of questioned that one for safety, narrow road, no parking. So when we change this and adopt it, will that change our subdivision?
I think, just for clarification, this is a plan to make plans. So if we adopted this, that wouldn't come about right away, but we could certainly look at a regulation or a bylaw that would include that. And so this is step one, to give us some direction. And each individual part of this would be coming forward to council, to say, this is our recommendations, and put it forward to you. So is that something that we would put forward? Probably if this was adopted, and it would ultimately be up to council to say whether that was something that was agreeable or not.
Yeah, and certainly, I think the integration between subdivisions is a big part of it. You know, we tend to have, here's a lot, and we have to have our own regulations and rules that make sure that we're considering fire access between lots, between landowners, not just go in, do backup and come out. No, it should go through the next land.
And access doesn't necessarily mean building a road. You've got a big network of bike trails here. If those bike trails are wide enough, they can accommodate an ATV or a bush truck, there's all kinds of different ways. You can go around places, so access isn't just roads. And it's also considering, you know, the risk of people that are out there recreating, doing something silly as well. And again, that's a common problem across the province, so...
It's not just recreating, it's B.C. hydrant doing the work.
Yeah, it is. It is. There's all kinds of ways we can start firing, just thinking about all of those.
One more question, Councilor.
Thanks, I think that's my biggest concern in our community, is the amount of people that are interfacing, climbing, and riding within our community. And one of the things I worry about is the smoke love spark, fuel management, as well as the new subdivision interface. We don't really, we have subdivisions that are built right up against forests without any management in those interfaces. Do you have any recommendations? Is that in this plan?
That's what this plan is all about.
So we'll start...
Yes.
So is that something that will come for funding next budget as well, is interface management?
Yeah, I can answer that. The latest grant that, or the latest program that Bruce had just spoken about, I just learned about, and I did very, very, very recently make some suggestions that we should have that included in this year's budget, so yes.
Please. Yeah, that's relatively recent.
It's last week.
Exactly.
So I think, I mean, in terms of your question, the FireSmart issue helps to deal with getting the home organized so that it's not going to burn out of the community. I mean, realistically, the biggest risk of a fire right now in Squamish is a house fire in July escaping into the forest, okay? In my opinion, or somebody lighting an illegal fire in a bad place at the wrong time, that goes on all over... That, that goes on all over the place, or homeless people, or, or whatever. I've seen them all. I, I, I mean, the key point is, is that, that, one of the things is having so many people recreating people here, you have a lot of eyes and, and, and ears on the ground, and it's a double-edged sword. You've got people that are going to report right away if they see a fire, and you've got potentially some, um, people that, that may cause fire. But I always think the number of people out there actually outweigh the, the risk and is better. So you don't want to sort of, a lot of people talk about, oh, we're going to shut down the trails, or we're going to do this during fire season. I don't actually think that's a great idea, because I think more often than not, it's people, users that are more concerned that, that report fires in my experience. So, I, I, and I think it's just more about awareness and making people really aware of the conditions. So that fits in with, ideally, the, the district really gets onside with continuing to try and promote Fire Smart at the property level, um, the individual homeowner and how they're behaving and, and how their vegetation is being managed. So for example, people love to plant cedar hedges in, on the coast. I don't know how many of you have seen a cedar hedge burn, but it's pretty damn fine if you like fire. It goes up like a, like a Roman candle. And, um, so cedar hedging right next to houses or juniper are bad species, and, and, and they're one of my biggest pet peeves. Many people have large hedges right next to their homes, and we talk about that house fire escaping. I've had arguments with people, well, if they irrigate it, it's not going to be a hazard, they still burn even if they're irrigated. So when, and usually they're within meters of the house. Usually they're next to siding, uh, or somebody's got a propane tank or, or wood shed or whatever. That's going to be the hazard that's really going to, um, cause this problem. So those kind of education, um, events where we can promote reducing those kind of things is really a big, a big thing. And I think any planning you do, you want to incorporate that in, the fire thought process into your planning as you get new development. So that communication and education is really important. I've suggested that you make this available on your website. You have a wildfire working group that, uh, should develop a, a strategic plan to implement these recommendations. So we've made a whole host of recommendations, we've given them priorities, we've given them estimates of how much time we think they'll, they'll be to implement, but really it's up to you people to decide how you want to implement. They're only recommendations. Ideally, you, uh, consider establishment of a local interface steering committee to, to coordinate wildfire risk reduction efforts. And I've found that bringing this information into the schools has been really helpful in, in promoting parents to do what they should do. The parents don't want to let, usually listen, but when, um, their little child comes home and says, I'm really worried about the fire hazard around our house, we got a lot of traction.
Use the children.
Use the children, it's, it's, it's a good way to go. Ideally, uh, explore some potential partnerships with local literacy, uh, programs to incorporate some of this knowledge, continue your preparedness days. You, you, you do participate with, uh, some, some, um, a booth and, and some local information that I'm aware of. Ideally, the more you can expand that, whenever you have a public function during fire season. And I always think you get the biggest bang from the buck June to September. After that, it's raining, people aren't really interested. So, so as much as it seems opportunistic, when there's fires burning in B.C., that's the best time to get people engaged in thinking about this. Promote and provide information to private landowners, particularly large private landowners that have forests. Um, I, I know in many communities, like if you think of Kelowna, for example, they have some very big undeveloped lots still that are actually some of the most hazardous fuels around Kelowna. They're disease, they're heavy fuel loads, and they've had to do a lot of work around that, that kind of thing. Construct and operate a fire danger rating sign. You have a good sign right up at Brackendale that gives you danger. You don't really have a great source of information coming north. I was just thinking about that when I was coming here. Um, if it's a flashing electric sign, all the more power, particularly if it flashes in color, some things like that really bring attention to the issue at the critical times. But you have a lot of people going through this corridor, the more you can bring them in line. I know the province does a good job of putting up fire danger, no fires on their signage, but you don't have a lot, uh, people heading in the north direction coming from Vancouver.
Just a quick thing, I've got a couple councillors on the list, and I, I'm going to ask council, if you have a clarification question, like you didn't understand, you just want it to be clarified, we'll address it right away, if not, we'll, we'll.
Four more slides.
Take it to the end. And just, I imagine committees are really collaborative, if you have a question, just put your hand up and come to us.
So parks and trails, I think I already talked about that, include that in the planning process in terms of the vulnerability of the, you know, the, the, the risk on the trail and utilizing that for access. Ideally, uh, we've been recommending that you create a map book or spatial database displaying the trail network, both for internal use and external use. The, a, a lot of trails are out there that, that aren't properly mapped. The more we know where they are, the easier it is that either we can access a fire or we, we, we can, but, but you have a collection of probably trails on your GIS, but that's probably not all encompassing, both private and public trails. Preparedness, you want to enhance your preparedness and, and to threats and wildfire. So you want to cooperatively identify the risk and opportunities to work with the B.C. Wildfire Service. And ideally, continue frequent annual training with the B.C. Wildfire Service. I don't know when the last joint exercise was here, but joint exercises with wildfire are a really good opportunity to go through some of the issues, um, that, you know, both structural firefighters and wildfires have to sort of communicate on. There, there is a difference between the two groups, they have different expertise and they do things differently, and we want to make sure they align in, in a larger event properly. Whether that's installing sprinklers, whether that's, you know, what bush capacity the local structural guys have compared to what the Forest Service has, how that's all coordinated is really important. Fire suppression resources, ideally, you want to review your infrastructure and make sure you've got the right equipment to address a wildfire, and, and I generally leave that up to the department to identify what their, their, their missing links are. Um, the, the wildfire response truck should have a larger, um, GBW and a greater tank capacity here. It probably is too small. You want to look at investigating, um, the opportunity to install additional strategically located dry hydrants. So that's where these guys can, can, uh, can store water or, or draw water, um, from, from a pond. So ideally, uh, the last thing would be to, to procure a water tender, or you can even bring that in on contract if you can't afford to purchase it on, 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 you know, as part of the, the arsenal. It, it's, it's just as easy to bring in a contract operator for the summer. Not as, not as efficient monetarily, but will be a short-term fix. So in summary, this plan sets the stage for implementing the actions to reduce risk in the community. And there's a total of 48 recommendations, I said they've been prioritized, and I, and we've had dialogue with, with Bill and Megan to kind of develop this priority and, and action plan. Continue to collaborate with the B.C. Wildfire Service, you've got a lot of, uh, forest licensees that are operating in the area of First Nations. I should say that we've recently done, uh, a plan for the Squamish Nation, and they've been consulted on your plan, and so there is some cross-pollination there. Again, you've got to work with the priorities, there's a lot of recommendations, you're not going to do them all at once. So ideally, your collective group is going to make some decisions around what the most important and how to make that, how to make that implementation happy, uh, happen. And really, I think the other, the most important thing is you want to build on the outreach and education tools that you've already got and strengthen those to, to leverage as much information to public homeowners and public recreation here to limit the probability of that unintended human-caused fires. That, that's where we really want, we want to focus the education. We do not want a human-caused fire. Generally, that human-caused fire is going to happen at the worst time of the year, July, August. The interior's already got all the resources, we don't have the resources we need here, and so the probability of that fire becoming bigger, more difficult to control, is higher at those times of year. So that's why it's so important that we reduce this human-cause, uh, issue, and you've seen how difficult it is all over the province. So that concludes my, uh, quick PowerPoint summary, uh, and I'll, I leave the.
That's a metaphor, right?
Uh, I'll leave it open to any questions or comments.
Thank you. Gus, prior.
Yeah, thanks. So a lot of this stuff should be done by next, uh, it's very important, there's a lot of these.
A lot of the basic stuff, ideally, you want to start implementing right away. The fuel management stuff is going to take some time, um, probably several years at best. I mean, we've been working in Whistler since 2005, we've got another 15 years there.
So just for the process, I mean, would staff look at this and go, gee, now that we're looking at this building's landscape plans, we better tell them, get rid of that hedge? I mean, is that how we'd be proactive, or do we have to form this committee and target these?
This might be a question for Gary.
Wes.
Yeah.
This wouldn't be the first time we've done it, anyway. We've, I think we've already, in some cases, asked people to incorporate the Fire Smart into their building schemes, so. But can we formalize it in our subdivision development control, vital, building vital? Yes, we can.
And I think you look at, this is a master plan like the dozen other master plans we've done in the last four years. It lays a roadmap to the work that we have to do immediately, immediate term, intermediate term and long term, and allows us to then integrate those into our budgets and our long-term financial planning, as well as, as, uh, create a roadmap for funding opportunities through grants and other things. So this is one of those roadmap documents. There's immediate action items and there's long term, and, and ideally, it gets updated in five or, six years so that you're always continually on top of those issues.
Exactly.
So we'll get you back here in five weeks when there's a new council.
Ask the chief.
Well, this, this will be integrated into the budget, they'll be, just like every master plan we've done. I'm sure the new council will go over all the master planning documents we've done as, as part of their orientation, you know? They need, I'm hoping that a lot of the candidates have familiarized themselves already with all those documents. So, um, so yes, education is going to be part of the next council. Absolutely. I would hope. I have Doug, and then Karen?
Nick?
Yes.
Thank you. Some interesting points, and, and we're talking about perhaps making a DP area for some of the interface areas. Uh, I'll leave it with staff to consider, but I've run into, uh, when I was practicing and doing property transfers up in the Okanagan, and you do a title search, of course, and you check the things on title. There was a lot of properties I ran into that had restrictive covenants, uh, which were very, very prescriptive about the type of vegetation and how close it could be to the house. Uh, and it started out, out here is the forest kind of thing, and as you got closer to the house, it got less and less flammable, and, and it was very prescriptive. And the advantage of that, uh, I think, is that if it's in favor of the district, of course, uh, 10 years after the house is built, uh, and the VP is all finished with and everything for the subdivision, you can go back and make sure that people are complying with that covenant. And it gives you a tool to actually ensure compliance. Hard to retrofit, though. Uh, I mean, there's a few blocks, and actually I happen to live in one, which actually interfaced with the forest. Over my backyard is Regional District, and you can head east from there and you don't hit anything until the Okanagan Valley. So, it, it, you know, it's a little harder with, with the built-up areas, so I think that's where the education comes in. And I'm not sure what I can do about my cedar hedge now.
No, me neither.
Very great.
That's really good at Halloween.
So, uh, but we don't have to dwell on that right now. But the other thing was, um, uh, oh, are we mapping these areas at all? And, and I'm thinking, you know, there's obvious ones as you head out of sort of the existing built area into a forest or greenfield area, that, that's pretty obvious. And the Chikai Fan, for example, uh, is a new subdivision that's in the approval process, and, and if that goes ahead, it will be significantly surrounded by what is now a forest, it's a woodlot, actually. So that, clearly there's application there. But we've also talked about wildlife corridors throughout our time looking at different applications, and it strikes me, without seeing a map in front of me, there's sort of incursions into our built-up area that are potentially a path for a fire to come through. And I wonder if we map those or have looked at that, or will we consider mapping those? Because it might be that we want to break some of them, just.
I'm going to suggest that they have all been looked at, and they all are incorporated into this, because we look at all those parcels and fingers that go in. As long as they're on crown land, if they're private land, we can't do anything about them. And that's where the Fire Smart crossover has to happen. So as long as you're talking about public lands, the other thing that I didn't talk about is that many times a builder will build a community, and then the, the community will assume those parcels of parkland or trails or whatever. Often, those come into communities during assumption, and they're still in a hazard condition, and then the community has a liability to deal with. Kelowna's having some big problems with development parcels that they've assumed over the years that weren't properly treated upfront. So as part of that assumption process, you want to make sure that those are assumed in, in, in a condition where the hazard's been reduced if there is an identified hazard. And in a community where you've got a lot of development like this, I think that's an important, important thing to consider.
Karen, Susan?
Yes, so I have a couple of questions. So this does apply to public lands, but is there funding available for private landowners? Because we do have a few that are sitting on large.
So one of the biggest problems that we have in the province is that there is a lot of hazardous fuels on private land. And generally speaking, private landowners don't, either don't have the resources.
Right.
To, to treat those areas, or they don't want to. So it, it, it continues to be a problem. This new CRI funding doesn't appear to have any restrictions in applying it to potentially some private land, or at least educating better private landowners or identifying those parcels. There, there's still work out the details, I don't have all of that in front of me. I, I've been spending the last week trying to get information, but I think there is some money available, like the district could, for example, use its, uh, chipping resources if, if the private landowner had material that they need to dispose of, maybe it can be chipped by the municipality. That's going on in Whistler right now. They have a, a two-weekend period where they're going around chipping material for, uh, homeowners that want to dispose of some of this stuff, because the disposal is the big issue, it costs a lot of money, especially if you have some larger trees. So there, there, there are some tools that we, we can develop to work with landholders. You don't necessarily have to treat the whole parcel, you want to treat that, that piece that's accessed close to roadways, or somebody could throw a cigarette. So, so you have to think strategically about this.
Okay. Recommendation 25 talks about future timber harvesting and modified stocking.
Yes.
And are you actually suggesting that they plant not just conifers, but deciduous?
Both deciduous and a reduced number of conifers.
And how do we have control over it?
Basically, in the interface, in this study area, on crown land, you can work with the Forest Service to reduce the stocking standards. So stocking standards, for those who don't know, prescribe, based on the ecosystem, the number of trees that are going to be planted after harvest. They're generally high, and they usually create a dense forest that optimizes the growth of the trees for future harvest. In interface areas, the Forest Service is now adopting rationales for reduced stocking standards or different stocking standards that reduce or mitigate some of those fire risks.
All right, so the mapping we've done identifies those areas where we should be.
Where, where we could go to the district and where we could rationalize reducing stocking standards if those areas are harvested.
Okay. Uh, and two more questions.
Okay.
Uh, the fire breaks you mentioned in here, they seem very wide.
300 meters.
300 meters.
Well, remember, we're not.
But you're not talking about.
We're not talking about clearcutting.
Just didn't.
It's a shaded fuel break. And the idea is that if fire hits it, if it's built properly, it goes to the ground. These guys are safe on the ground, they can get in, they can access, but we're not talking. Clearcutting is going to make it worse. 20 years from now, we're going to have a worse hazard if we clearcut.
Okay, and my last question is, based on what you're seeing around the province, and some of the conversations have been, happening over this last, I don't know, people refusing to leave, are you seeing any movement towards a stay and defend policy rather than pure evacuation?
So I will cut it up by saying, I'm not an advocate of stay and defend after what happened in Australia a few years ago.
I was living in Australia this time.
Okay, so stay and defend, in my opinion, it, unless you have an incredibly good communication system, is very dangerous. And after Fort McMurray, you've seen that governments have become even more, uh, proactive in getting people out before fire, and I personally think that's the right avenue. I've dealt with the ranching community, I've dealt with the agricultural community, they don't want to leave because they have so much at stake. don't want to leave because they have so much at stake. And I, I think what the province has to do with those stakeholders is find a better way to allow them access to their, to their resources during fire events, and be a little less rigid on the evacuation. So there's, there's some give and take on both sides of the equation, but I'm not a proponent of stay and defend.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, and then anyone else wants to ask a question?
I'm just wondering about education funds as well. For the, I know that now a lot of volunteers are doing, doing our fire education within the department. Do we have adequate resources in the budget for next year to ensure that we can actually train the volunteers, and also get everyone in the community a little bit more?
You're talking about volunteer firefighters.
Yeah, volunteer firefighters.
Yeah, so we did this year have a fire smart grant for $10,000, and we did implement a community chipper program, which is, in part, able to get interface fuels out of people's properties, but it also allowed us to start a conversation, which was successful. We did two weekends, and they were quite successful, and that was right through a grant. And as Bruce had said, this grant that we have right now is very new, and we're not sure what we can use it on, but I would be shocked if there wasn't a public education element to that grant. And so absolutely, as part of that grant, we would be using, if we could, that money for public education.
One more question.
We have control over our own parks, so integrating with the Smokebless Committee would be an amazing thing, is actually, and that might be happening already with the fire department, but actually, having boots on ground with volunteers that can do fuel cleanup in the Smokebless Park, that is something we have control over. What would be the recommendation as far as integrating with provincial parks that are in our region, and making sure that they're doing their, their work with fire smart, because our community is so integrated into the provincial system?
And one of our, more challenging, not just Smokebless, but Merrill Park up in the Highlands is a really challenging one, that we have to, and that's all part of it, it's in the document.
So B.C. Parks is working in some areas. I just got a contract request to look at Golden Years around all their campgrounds, and looking at making them fire smart. I haven't seen anything for Alice Lake yet, but B.C. Parks has got their own, they've actually have a wildfire specialist now working in Victoria. So I think they, they are willing to work proactively with communities, but I think the community has to take the lead.
And just a quick, like, you're not talking about Quest University?
No.
Did I say Quest in Squamish?
No, I didn't say, did I say Quest?
I thought you said Quest.
No. No, I said Alice Lake, and...
You said...
Did I say Quest?
You said Quest and Golden Years Park was on there.
No, well, that's not what I meant.
I want just to make sure, that's people with you.
No, 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 sorry.
Yeah, okay. Haley?
Yeah, my question, Bruce, I think it's for you. My name's Haley, I'm from the local paper.
She's from the local...
Yeah, Squamish chief.
Okay.
And my challenge with this document is trying to distill it, and make it a little more general. Is it fair to say that proposed list of mediation areas, is that sort of the highest priority areas?
There's two, there's, there's 195 hectares that we've made high priority. There's 740 hectares in total. So there are some high priority areas that are next to homes, or next to infrastructure. Don't forget, as part of this plan, we've looked at your infrastructure. So is that your electrical system, your, any treatment plants, those kind of things? We look at vulnerability of those, because if you look at what happened in Fort McMurray, they lost their whole sewage treatment plant for four weeks, and it really delayed the post-fire recovery period. Many communities have lost wood electrical poles that have serviced important infrastructure. You lose that, so a lot of this fuel treatment is not only focused on protecting homes, but protecting infrastructure that's important to the community.
And I saw a lot of the mediation areas kind of correlate to campsites or recreation sites. Is that because there's a higher risk, or near the highway, is it just because there's more accidents?
Highway, we have lots of people throwing incendiaries out at the wrong time of the year, so that's an area that...
Mind-blowing.
And also, that's your evacuation route. So I don't know if you saw this summer, but Mackenzie had a big fire that blocked their evacuation. I have two people going tomorrow to Mackenzie to start planning to clear that evacuation route, because they've realized they're trapped in a fire. So, so that is part of this as well. Public safety is a big concern as part of this issue.
Great, thanks.
Welcome.
I think some of the big challenges, you know, we all live here because of these beautiful forests, and mountains, and the cliffs, and the ocean, and there's a fine balance between making your community safe, and making sure you don't lose that essence of who we are too, and lose those forests, and those ecosystems within the forest. So I think a lot, I think, I think future councils and the community will have to grapple with, where is that fine balance? The report tries to sort of get us there, but I think there's some community values and aesthetics, and some other things that I think people will need to get their brains around in terms of...
So I can tell you, we've done about 200 hectares in North Van. We've done about 340 hectares in Whistler. When I started in Whistler, couldn't cut a tree. They didn't want a tree cut. Now, we're starting to move right behind neighborhoods. We're actually logging behind people's homes, and they actually are saying it looks better after we've been in there, and it greens up, and you wouldn't know that we hadn't even been in there. So it is a light hand. It is focused on taking the smallest diameter material that is the most hazardous, and focused on leaving the largest trees. And really, when you look at the history of what's happened around these communities, they were heavily logged in the 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s. The logging has created denser, smaller material that isn't as biologically diverse. When you thin, you open, the, the growth is concentrated on fewer stems, they get bigger faster, so you're actually promoting old growth attributes quicker.
Yeah, no, and that really goes back to the communications and education piece.
It does.
I have Doug and Karen.
When you do this thinning, we have some areas that we think of as critical habitat, because they're riparian areas essentially. Are you able to, to do that and maintain habitat?
So generally, riparian areas we stay out of, because they're deciduous, and deciduous forests have high fuller moisture content, and they don't burn as easy. So we do a little bit in some of these transitional sites, and we'll generally focus on taking the conifers out, and we don't do any, we don't do any machine work in those areas, and it's brought outside of that riparian area, if we have to do it. Ideally, rare, we'd look, as part of this, we've identified all your critical habitats from the CDC, and those areas are considered in terms of where we've recommended fuel management treatments, because we don't want conflict.
Have we, in our emergency management planning, done an exercise with B.C. Fire Service, so we understand where we end and they begin, and, you know, we've got the wood fiber sites, so who's responsible for that, and then interface to crown land versus our own? So are we, are we on top of that? It feels like, in just listening to the conversations over the last two summers, that having that coordination and that awareness of who's going to fight fires where helps communities.
I can deal with that on a couple of levels. One, we do, we haven't done any full exercises yet, but we do train together every year to some level or another, depending on what they're available, it would be, and how busy they are. They will come and train with us on weekends, or they'll come and meet career staff. As far as who's doing what, that's very clearly outlined by them. We go over it with them every year about what their responsibilities are, what our responsibilities are, where, and on whose land. So it's clarified, and actually, it gets clearer every year, because unfortunately, they've had a lot of practice recently, and, you know, the gray areas are becoming less and less.
Thanks. Any other questions from anybody? Any other final comments from any of you? I was looking for...
Yeah, well, I guess, I mean, this is fairly labor-intensive, I understand, when you're going in there with chainsaws and it's done by hand, I take it.
Can be done mechanically, too. It depends on the type of stand. So right now, we're working with a small yarder up in Whistler, it's basically a tractor with a tower. We have, we are doing some, some, okay, I'm losing my feller buncher work in the Callahan and Chekmas, so depending on the stand and the characteristics, some of it can be mechanical, some of it is, is manual.
So do you train local, you go for this, or do you take the same...
No, generally, all of this work is tendered. There's probably about 20 different companies around the province that are doing it. It's expensive, but we're trying to drive the price down through competition.
Any final thoughts? No? Excellent. I thought the report was great, and the presentation was helpful, it was really good, too, so appreciate your clarity there, it was really good. There is a recommended motion from the committee that we recommend that council approve the community wildfire plan as presented. Approved by councillor Elliot, seconded by councillor Chappell. Called a question, all those in favor? Most of any, motion carries. Thanks for your work.